I'm not able to hear anybody.
Yes.
There it is.
Danielle, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yeah, loud and clear.
So, so, I mean, mine's just turned on.
Yeah.
When the red lights on up here, that means the microphone's on.
Thank you.
Steve, you need to put yours on.
I said, we've been leaving them off until we, till we talk. Like shuffle and paper noise or whatever.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to grab a packet, so I'm just going by emails today.
Read everything except the minutes. Haven't been reading those minutes lately. Big two days.
Let's call a meeting order, please. See, Daniel Black is joining us via Zoom. Gosh, should I be here momentarily? It's excused. First item in the agenda, consideration of the meeting minutes from April 10th, April 24th. We don't have April 10th. We do have April 24th. Does anyone have any questions, comments on any of them?
No.
Yes. Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
All right, line 21. After my name, can we just cross out in person? I mean, it's, it should be implied that I was there in person. Next to Paul's name, can we, we insert parentheses and write by Zoom? That was a meeting you were by Zoom, right? Um, line 277. Um, there should, the, the end of that sentence should say demonstrating a reduction in off-site water flow in a 50-year storm.
Maybe during a.
What's during the 50? Okay, during.
Sold.
Even better. And line 351.
Two, five, one?
Three, five, one.
Three, four.
I believe Roger's last name is spelled B E R U V E.
Yep.
B E R U B E. Berube. B E R U B E. And then, I guess I have a, just, uh, dissatisfaction with the way that the abuddhas list is being done, and I don't know if you want to get into that conversation now.
Uh, what do we bring it up under the business?
Let's bring it up under other business, but I'd like to not, not approve, we can approve the minutes pending a revised abuddha list. Yes, if that's okay.
Why don't we just skip this, the whole discussion to the end of the
meeting? We can do that, too.
Is there a motion? Hold off and a vote on this until, towards the end of this meeting?
I'll make a motion to postpone the discussion till the end of the meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. So, next item on the agenda. So, we have two conceptuals. I'd like to go down to those two and get those out of the way. Yes, you are. Line 22, alternate Josh and I'd seated as a full member. Oh. Okay, the agenda, okay. Okay, we'll, we'll make a note of that. Yeah, you know, we hear on the 10th. We hear on the 10th. We're here for both meetings. Okay, so we'll fix that. Right, so is there a motion to skip over? Um, item 3A and 3B, items 3A and 3B, and we want a new business to conceptualize. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Your first one. Conceptual. Neat. Giannino, conceptual owners of the Red Slayin, contactless boutique in currently has six rental rooms. They would like to add additional rental units. Anyone here for this? Okay. Next one.
Okay.
Captain Walsh. Being Notch Properties LLC. On up.
Is this already on, or do I have to? Do I have to turn the microphone on?
Yeah.
I'm on. Um, I'm Justin Walsh from Notch Properties. I am the owner of the building on Main Street that burned down a couple of weeks ago now, and um, so I'm here today to start having a conversation about what happens after something like this in terms of um, how a building could be rebuilt on that lot. Um, out, you know, it, it was non-conforming before, likely what is going to get rebuilt is also going to be non-conforming. So what that looks like, what kind of variances you guys grant, if, you know, is there a time period? I guess that's my first question is to rebuild something that's non-conforming, is there a standard time limit on something like that?
Yeah.
And is that one year to get a plan in place or to put a shovel in the ground?
Yeah. All right, I think when you say plan, I think site plan approval, and, you know, usually gets second approval, that's good for so many years before you can pull a building permit.
If you're going to build a same footprint that he has now, exact same building. All we would need is and a demolition. Well, if you were going to build the exact same element, I don't think. Oh. But you built the same exact thing on.
Nothing needed, okay. So, yep, so also, so demolition, we are already permitted, and it's going to be starting on Friday. Um, into, into Monday. Um, so being that we're not planning on building it in the same footprint, we're starting to look for what we can do in terms of if we want to build something that is of a similar size, but maybe, you know, move forward towards the street or something like that. Once you start, once you move off of that, like built on the same footprint, then, then what does it look like, you know?
Me, the biggest concern would be the parking.
Right.
With something.
Yep.
Parking is a big issue.
Right. So we would be outside on Pleasant Street. There's no way I think we could get to that 10-foot setback. Um, you could, you could move the building closer to Main Street, so you're actually improving the setbacks. You could move closer to Main Street, so we're going from four parking spots to six. You know, you could go from 10 apartments to eight. I guess the question here is, if we're improving at every point, is that enough? If we're building a new place, but everything, it's closer to the required setbacks, and there's more parking per unit, even though we're not going to meet that one and a quarter per one bedroom or whatever, is that the sort of thing that the town would consider approving?
This is conceptual, so it's not binding upon the parties. I would say, you know, we'd like to move you more towards conformity.
Yep.
You know, I think, I would look favorable, I would look favorable on something like that. Well, it depends on what they're asking.
The waivers work. That would put a part of the property. It's going, it's going to move. He's got to start from scratch and try and put it in a position that is better suited parking. And say that still doesn't give him part of the parts. Still has a problem with setbacks. And I think it would have to be able, to be able, I bet they're completely based on on the hardship. And hardship could be, I mean, several things. And I would think he could go, if you're just going to build the building the way it was, if it was only, say, for example, a access issue, like you need to put another stairway in, and then we'll step back.
Hmm.
The board has given here, the board has given waivers, will be able to put a fire access and setback outside of the building. You got to fill all the building stuff for the third day, the dead of the month, so that could be applied. I mean, the parking issue, I think, it's harder, easier to do. Move that away. So, look, empty the fire parking, it doesn't be.
Yep. Is, is that, so is that something that would, I would have to go to the zoning board to get a variance? Because, so certainly, you know, as you guys know, this building has had 10 apartments in it. It's been full of tenants that have not needed a car. You know, there, there's lots of walkable jobs here. I know this is, this isn't like, you know, to the code or whatever, but like, I've had no issue filling that building up with people that don't have vehicles.
What is this?
Um, that's a good question. The, hon- honestly, I think the current footprint isn't ideal. I think it's, I think it's too close to Pleasant Street. It doesn't allow for enough parking. I think it would be better if it was closer than that. You know, it, I just think it's in a bad spot, and we can do better, quite frankly. Of course, if the only way to rebuild something is like right there, we'd have to take that into consideration, but it seems, it seems, uh, that wouldn't be the best thing for anybody. It is.
Yeah, I was thinking preliminaries would be ideal, and I was thinking, had you considered omitting the, um, the shop that was present in the structure, that we'd have a, a little bit more room for parking as well, and maybe another apartment perhaps?
Yeah, so preliminary designs don't have a, um, any commercial space, just so it'll be all residential in there. Um, so, you know, you're way improving the ratio. You know, you're taking lots of parking, you know, off of the municipal, and, you know, off of the Longfellow Building there, and you know, the people were using to go to the ice cream shop before, so.
Hey. Go.
So, everything's exploratory. Yep. Yep. Okay. Okay.
Justin, have you read in, in the land use, the, um, requirements for a building that has been subject to a fire?
No, that would have been good prep work.
All right, a non-conforming structure or building which is damaged or destroyed by natural causes such as a fire or other calamity beyond the control of the owner or occupant may be repaired or rebuilt, and any non-conforming use of the structure or building may be resumed if the following conditions are met. There's three conditions. One, repair or rebuilding must be completed within one year after the damage or destruction occurs, unless an extension is allowed by the Board of Selectmen for a good cause shown. Two, the structure or building shall occupy the same footprint as the damaged or destroyed structure or building, and its height and volume may not be expanded or extended. And then three is repairs or reconstruction shall be conducted pursuant to a properly issued land use permit and site plan review where applicable, and shall conform to all applicable building, plumbing, electrical, and other code and water and sewer regulation requirements. So it looks like the, the it, I guess from what I'm hearing from you, it looks like the one problem is, is on the same footprint.
Right.
Um, if you were to take that footprint and slide it
Hmm.
in, in a, in a different configuration, I would think that, that you would need to go to the ZBA
Yep.
to get approval to, to make that one change. And then if, if they grant you that waiver, these others will apply. Now,
Okay.
now, number one, you might not have it all completed in one year, but if, again, if you get the approval from this board
Hmm.
and then start on the project, and then come in and ask for a, a, a one-year extension. Um, and in here it says the Board of Selectmen, which I did not know that, but that'd be up to the Board of Selectmen to, to grant you that.
Yeah, you wish it the land use permit, so.
Yeah, I guess that would make sense. Um, and then, of course, no matter what we say, you still have to build it, as the third thing says, you know, you have to build it to building code.
Yeah, of course.
Currently, um, in water and sewer regulations, and electric and plumbing, and egress, and all that stuff, you'd have to build to no matter what
Right.
you build over there.
For sure.
Um, so, so the real thing to me is if, if, if you're going to build on this, this, the same size footprint, you just want to move it. It seems like that would be a ZBA meeting. Assuming they approve it, then, then you apply for your, um, land use.
Is everyone saying they need to go, he needs to go to ZBA for? We can waive the setback dimensional requirements in this particular zone.
In that zone.
So, waive what you can. And as the board has called for, that stays the same footprint. That's exactly where it is. The footprint is where you put your plant.
So he's not putting it in the same footprint. So he's building a new building, but, you know, within setbacks, sort of like what happened across the street. They took down the existing building. He got a waiver to, to put that building within the setbacks. Or this board gave him the waiver, so I don't see why this one would have to the ZPA.
Are you saying if it was within, if we were within the setback, or like, are you saying that if it was still non-conforming? Or if it now was, the building, new building was?
The new building was non-conformant. I mean, this, this gentleman over here took down three non-conforming buildings, changed the footprint. You know, this board had the authority to grant him a waiver, setback requirements, dimensional requirements. So, just to mess with the rest.
Do, do you mind summing up kind of what you had just explained to me?
I think the board can grant it, uh, this board can grant a waiver from the, uh, setback requirements.
Would he have to go through site plan review?
Change his footprint.
In, in front of this board, though.
I would say so.
Okay, but then would he have to meet the parking regulations?
If you have a park regulation, it's all part.
Right.
So, anyway, who can, the, 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 the regulations and product? You just gotta get this part free. Even the same footprint. That would seem, where it put it, the billions, problems, and it's the iterating. It's just divided what he has. So, maybe move that, put this from here, here. Then go to site plan review, sorry, ZBA to do it.
So.
I mean, if he needs, you know, if you, if a gentleman feels he needs a waiver or a variance for the parking spaces. If he moves, if he moves, right, we don't know what his plans are. But is that board's opinion that that would have to go to the ZBA first?
I I, I, oh, go ahead.
But there are no state footprints, could have the ZBA.
Right.
Move that going, but I don't. And schedule the spectrum, segment for what's part. That would be, if there is, that could be.
If, what does he need to go to ZVA for? What does he ask him for? Variants of what?
Well, what he was pointing to, if he goes to build keep the same kind of parks. And the space, the retail space down below. Tell me, tell me the waiver or the variance for. Under what hardship? I don't know. I don't know how, you know, the parking space, how many parking spaces would that require? So, say they're one, are they one bedroom?
They've all been, they've all been one bedroom, yeah. I think likely a rebuild would be fewer apartments that are slightly larger, though. You know, even if it was built to the same footprint and everything, I don't think you'd put 10 apartments back in there again.
But eight, they put a, eight, eight parking spaces, plus whatever the retail space. We didn't have any retail space.
Is it eight, or is it one and a quarter per?
I, Carol.
I'm sorry.
One and a quarter, yeah.
What if we need, I don't have it written.
Yeah, yeah. So, so the pathway forward, if, if not building in the same footprint to similar specs, would be, would start at uh, the zoning board for a variance. If I wanted to, if I wanted to build something that was not going to have enough parking, it would have to go through them first. Is that kind of the takeaway?
Probably first step.
Go ahead, Joe.
You can move it. That's it. You would, you would, you would, you would, you would.
Okay.
If you, one more can add, that would be, that would be. Oh. The DVA would have to give the waiver for it, but we've been saying, you gotta.
Yeah. Definitely. That's a, that's a grand plan. Right.
You gotta do, you know, pretty, you know, I just keep making one DVA.
Or he could come with a conceptual site plan, and we'd say, yeah, this is.
That's cool, but if you go to DVA, it's true, it's true, it's that GVA. Where you I would tell you about, um, it's just such a small lot.
Hmm.
You know, man, and, and the lot is kind of cut up, too. I don't know. I mean.
It's a subdivision with the neighbor there, too, so it's a, it is, it's a complicated lot, for sure.
Oh, yeah, I don't know how that fits in, but once you start making changes as well, you know, with, with that makes any changes in regards to what you want to do when you move it.
Hmm.
And also with the park.
Right.
Really, that's why I asked something to you. I felt about the same place.
Yep.
Want to make the place bigger. Bigger, but you don't have, you know, you're not changing the footprint of the building. You can change the interior around it, I think, without, I would think without
Oh, yeah.
doing that, but you know, if that exterior stays the same. And, and, and the same with like 88 departments, you're, I mean, floors, that's right.
It's three.
You're applying there.
Yep.
Where it puts, just lie on each floor, so you really, you know, the things you could have to do, maybe for that, I think of it as egress. I don't know if you have to have two separate egress. I mean, if you do, this board can give you a waiver to, to extend into a setback for that, before it's that's the cycle.
Right. Yeah. Um, in, so following that thought exercised through, it's being rebuilt in the same spot, same footprint, was it that it had to be the same uh, square footage, volume inside, too, or can you, can you kind of like extrapolate? Because the first floor was kind of bigger than the other two floors. Can you take that first floor and the footprint and go straight up three stories?
According, according to the way this is written, it says the same footprint.
Okay.
And, and the same height. Oh, and it says, and volume may not be expanded or extended.
Volume may not be.
Volumes, that would indicate.
So that would indicate that you, you couldn't, you know, you couldn't just take the 2100 or whatever the first floor was, and then just go.
Build straight up.
Okay.
Carol.
Um, so can I just ask the question? So right now, it's a mixed-use building, and it would be being converted to an all-apartment building, you know, that you're talking about right now. Do you consider that a change in use or not?
Yes.
So what I'm, this is what I'm thinking, even though it sounds more complicated, um, it might be, uh, more efficient if he asks for site plan review, move the building, you could give him waivers on the parking, you could give him waivers on, you know, say his plan goes into the setbacks because of exit or egress. And I think that you could take care of all of that, and I think you also have, you know, better, you're better equipped to make those decisions for him uh, than the ZBA is, because the ZBA is just going to look at a very limited thing, you know, is it going to be in the setbacks? Do we need a variance for that? And then he's going to have to be, have more than one variance. He'd have to have the parking variance or, you know, whatever. I'm just, I'm just trying to brainstorm here. Um, and I'm just thinking that it might be, you know, you could waive a lot of, uh, the normal site plan review requirements, uh, because it's, you know, it was already an established lot, and uh, anyway, I just think.
Definitely is something the town needs.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, what's the hardship?
And, and you did waivers for, um, you know, three buildings now, or two buildings, just the two buildings in terms of parking, terms of access, um. And, and I, I think that maybe it would work better if we did it that.
If, if, if that was to be you were getting a couple more parking spots out of relocate, moving the footprint, that might, I think, help pull a long way towards now doing something about it all. You'd have to take a look at that lot and see how it all fits on there, and whether you get an extra parking space or two out of it.
Hmm.
That might be the reason to do it, but without, without seeing an actual plan of
Right.
how, where you can put it so you get that.
Is that what you're, so is that sort of in your reading, that, that the hardship, is that what you're saying? Because it's
When you grant a waiver, you need a hardship.
When the CBA grants a waiver, they need a hardship.
When a plan is worked.
Right, but it's harder to get a variance from a ZVA that get a waiver. Meaning, because they have the five tests they have to do.
It's the same, if you still have the same test with.
But I think you have, I think you have a better arguable hardship with a fire than
Absolutely.
than just about any other circumstance.
Well, you do accept the fact that there's no reason why, and again, I'm all for, all for what you want to do, but there's no arguable reason why you would not want to put it back in the same place, the same footprint.
Well, the bad design, higher bad design.
Right. I can, I can think a little more about that. I would think that the town might also be similarly invested for a number of reasons, and you know, being a community hardship that they can't plow the road because the foundation juts into it, you know?
I probably don't want to talk about this, but yeah. But I mean, you know, you get, what I think about is someone else coming in, same thing, same way.
Yeah.
Allow someone with, with
Yep.
kind of apartments to have excellent parking space, and we know that was a hardship, but how about me, I mean, I, Harold, and so, I don't like sitting in this seat with someone else saying.
The next guy that comes in is probably going to have a blank, you know, a vacant piece of land. A vacant piece of land.
If someone comes in with these exact same circumstances, it might be right, but I don't think that exists in the town language, so I don't think we're really talking about this. We as a board have independent. Decisions on every applicant's application, I should say, the application that comes before us. And, and, and when we say yes to one person, one applicant, for, for whatever the reasons and circumstances that surround it, we can give a different answer. To a different applicant who has different circumstances. That should, that should never be the criteria. We, we have to do it for you because we're not gonna do it for everybody. That's, that's, I don't think that's what we have.
If you use judgment. If, if any board decisions don't set precedence.
That's true, but I also think you gotta take a look at. The fact of how much parking is going to be there. For eight or ten or whatever it is, how much space you have, but if it's not enough. Then you gotta look at that too, because about the problem with.
You know.
Gypsy or however that works, the pizza place outside there, so you, I mean, you know, you gotta look at all that food.
I mean, I guess there's more parking spaces and less apartments.
That's why I asked.
What, 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 what we're really looking, I mean.
I mean, I guess this building with current number of parking spaces hasn't been causing problems for town, so I guess as long as he doesn't expand the parking, I would think that shouldn't. To me, that wouldn't be an issue.
And, and I think I agree with Carol, if, 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 if you're gonna change the location. Of the footprint. And if you actually want to change the volume by going straight up. I, I think instead of looking at the. Rebuilding a fire thing, um, that you come before this board. In that zone, we have the right to, to make dimensional changes. I, I believe, right? With, with setbacks and all.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think we could make a, a very valid case for the parking, if you're gonna reduce the number of apartments, increase the number of parking spaces. There's, there's.
And that's what.
Extremely valid. But it would take an application.
Yep.
If you do this board and go through the site plan review process, we'd have to, uh, uh, notify about it. I, I agree with Carol, I think that would be the, the one to go.
Okay.
And, and with his, there's not that many of butters as opposed to South Peak or, you know, all those other.
Right.
Places where there's empty out for butters. There'll be minimal.
Butters. I mean, I think he's looking to prove to the sites, I don't.
Right.
I don't think you should make it unnecessarily difficult.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I think that even though the site plan is, is another application, I think it'd be easier than going through CBA and trying to. Get, get under the, uh, fire rebuilding.
Okay, and that eliminates some of the, the time elements of this as well, right? We get rid of that one year for extension thing if we're operating that way.
Like to see something.
Yeah.
So not ten years from now.
Yeah, me, me too, and, right. Great.
Year. It's one year. We're already done with, with one time.
Right.
We don't do that one year. And then doing. Twenty-one.
Understood.
Sorry. When we, if he sees next. April, he's here April first, twenty twenty-five, gets his approval in. Don't think we're gonna say, well, geez. We're not gonna.
We'll get the devil's gift, they're not the most.
Right.
It's easy to deed right now, but then it becomes a question of where does that road come through there? Do you see that top left of the script? So my recommendation is we can add this, bring it in, and then knowing that we want to. Put this together, but or deed part of it based off of the density that we have today and add dealing it later. I just. I don't really do something and then ultimately be.
I mean, and and I think the only reason for dating is to make sure that it's. Needed in perpetuity so it doesn't get built on later.
Okay, so I mean, that was my question. Is there going to be a permanent observation these these eleven acres? That's fine.
Yes, and we have no problem like a lot of these areas. There's no issue with that, right? So there's not, there's no, nothing that I'm seeing here that is ever. It's really more just in conjunction with working with town with certain sections, I think we should. You know, whether we did it now or we we hold people to where that driveway is or we wait and. Um, or we deed a certain section that correlates to the amount of units that are approved up to this point, which is.
When would you propose?
We're going to get into water. I would like to know water take details very soon, and then we can take that piece off and then talk about dating it at that point.
I'm glad you did.
Any other questions from members of the board? Are there any um items in rate? We work on a technical memorandum number one?
We we're running a grid. We just, we just got the three.
I know, I read the three. It but I have one in front of me. All right. Is there anything on technical memorandum number three? That um is of concern that you want to bring it up to the um. Penny board.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of these I would like to.
Okay, I got it.
Either either raise questions about or I can provide updates uh and actually one of them um. Uh, Ray and I even talked about today. So I guess just jumping down, the first one I'd like to jump to is number eight. Okay, okay, so if you recall, um, the first version of our subdivision plan, there were two land block lots. Um, these are the two lot numbers thirty nine point forty one and thirty nine point five oh. Uh, in a subsequent revision to the plans, we added a strip of lands that was ten feet wide. From that lot out to the hose room. Ray uh raised. You read raised questioning there um. Today I had attorney like reach out to. Town council Dennis. Uh Jason Dennis and. Jason just sent an email at five twenty three this afternoon. Uh, which you kind of reached through the statute and came to the conclusion at the end of that email that those lots comply with the state statute. So I can flip out a sheet here that kind of shows those two lots if that helps. Okay, so unfortunately they just fall on. Um, for the distance, this is thirty nine. We have exclusively in. The brain to give it. But it's vehicular access is unobtainable. And the other lot is. Seven hundred fifty six thirty nine forty one. That is access for common by.
We have updated plans to show that.
Instead of plans that you have.
What what they have done plans? Well, that is very January twenty four.
Uh, April second.
This on April second one it shows the easements.
Which shows the sliver of land.
Yep, and this is the, this is the set of plans that. Raise technical memorandum number three.
You don't have the ones that that are these size? Is this what he handed out last time? Here's this size. Yeah, and this. Well, this is dated January third, but then it's revised date is April second. But yeah, these these have the easements along with the the new. Slivers of land that that connect to the road.
I know Ray had made. Some comment about. Different easements and stuff like that.
Jason Dennis, you want to weigh in? Get your hand up. Jason. Here he is.
Hi, uh, I was not planning to uh join this meeting because I had had a conversation and email exchange with attorney look I. Um, he had called and sent an email to me today and I. Sent him a response to that and that was accurately re- reflected by the applicant. The reason I signed on and I've tried to email Derek and I tried to get in touch with Ray and everybody else to. Give them some information kind of last minute, but ahead of me joining this meeting is. Because, and this is a very unenviable position that I've put myself in. But I looked. Back at the statute, a different section than what attorney Derek and Lick and I were looking at. He's got this email now. I don't think he's at the meeting, and so that's why I say unenviable, because I have to further clarify my. Opinion, um, and I've done that. Um, with an, with an email to to Derek Lick and I copied Carol and and Ray on that email. Unfortunately, was sent at. Six thirty two. Um, and that's because I've been looking at this statute until my eyes have crossed. There is a further section in RSA six uh seventy four forty one, it's Roman numeral three. And further down in that section, when it's talking about that street that gives access to the lot. It says that it does not include a street from which the sole access to the lot is via a private easement or right of way. Unless such easement or right of way also meets the criteria set forth in sub paragraphs. Roman numeral one, A, B, C, D, or E. And so that is actually consistent with. Something that I believe I'd talked about at one of the other meetings that said. Um, just because a lot might have a frontage on a highway, if that's got a fence or trees and you can't actually access the lot. That frontage on on the main, main road, um, if that's not the access to it, wouldn't satisfy six seventy four forty one. And um, I'll be candid in my rev- if it was in my review and my discussions with attorney. Lick and and I guess in my haste to be cordial and professional and 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 agreeable. When we were looking at a certain section of that, that's what prompted my email to him at um. Uh, five twenty three. In that email, I had indicated that if the driveway is the access. And the driveway connects to a a a road such as Upper Crooked Mountain Road, then the access would. Um, be on a street giving, it would meet the statute saying the street giving access to the lot upon which. Such building is proposed to be placed. In doing further research, what actually happened is that was happening a lot. And the legislature made a specific change to add RSA six seventy four forty one colon three. To avoid that problem. And so um. I I think. I I feel very. Bad for having given a different opinion than I'm giving now and changing it. But I guess the end of the day, my, my job is to not be necessarily friendly or agreeable or whatever, but it's to be accurate. Um, and even if that means I missed the mark the first time in that five twenty three email. And looking back at it, my six thirty two P M email correctly cites to six seventy four forty one, Roman numeral three. In fairness to the applicant, of course, since Derek Lick is not here. Um, if they want him to have further uh review and response to that six thirty two email. And to have further conversation with me, that certainly would be would be appropriate. So I apologize for signing on I and and had taken up the time now to explain that. But I'm doing that in the interest of an accurate review and analysis of the the state statute six seventy four forty one. So. Again, I apologize for the uh, the. Further evolution, so to speak, of my opinion on that, but it's because of. Just looking at different sections of it and reading them in the totality uh. Related to this application. So again, my apologies. I won't apologize anymore, I guess. I've done that five times now, I think, but. Answer any questions on that opinion from anybody.
Yeah, Jason, huh? Can you give it to me in English a little bit? Can you give it to me in English a little bit? I'm I'm kind of looking at the plan that the gentleman brought to me.
Yes, so what you'll see in that plan is you will see they created like it looks like a ten foot little. Uh, cut out from the lot that was uh sort of landlocked, as you might say. That then touches Upper Crooked Mountain Road. That happens for both thirty nine forty one and thirty nine fifty.
Right.
So both of those have a strip that goes from the main lot. To Upper Crooked Mountain Road. Frontage on Upper Crooked Mountain Road. So they do in the plan have frontage on Upper Crooked Mountain Road.
That's provided by the ten, ten foot sliver.
Yeah, yes, obviously, that wouldn't be practical usable space for anything, but it it is obviously there and it is, it is frontage. And that's one of the things I was looking at was that there was frontage on the road. So yes, there is frontage on Upper Crooked Mountain Road for both of these lots. That box is checked. Um, the access to those two lots is by way of an easement over. Another private lot. And so when I was originally. Formulating my opinion on this in in conversation with attorney Lick and looking at the statute. My mind went to the idea of, well, everybody's access to their home is from their driveway. Like, that's how you get to your lot. You're, it might be off of a private road or a public road. And if your driveway connects to any roadway that satisfies. Six seventy four forty one. Then the street giving access to your lot. Satisfies the statute. Um, and here. These driveways do connect to a road that would satisfy the statute. However, it is because this was maybe used too much. According to the legislatures, let legislative body of the state of New Hampshire, they amended six seventy four forty one. To include language that says. If that access to the lot. Is by a private easement or a private right of way. Despite what it says further up in the statute in section one. That will not be deemed to satisfy this statute. Unless it independently meets the criteria for a roadway. So it would have to be uh a town approved road or et cetera. And and I think we've talked about that. At least I know I have with Carol a little bit. Um, before and with Derek before. So the criteria would still apply in this situation because the legislature said. We're not going to allow this private easement scenario.
So so literally you have to build a road over that easement.
Right.
It would not, yes, it would not have to be a, you know.
Super highway.
Super highway. It would have whatever the absolute. Minimum road requirements are. So instead of it being, you know, a. Twelve foot um dirt. Pothole gated whatever. Um, it would have to meet the min- whatever the minimum requirement for a private. Street in the town of of Lincoln is, is what that would have to meet.
They could make that a road. As you said, and the road could be twelve foot wide. That's. One lane road, but. The issue that I or the question I would have then is, well, it's satisfy. The requirements of the being able to get a fire truck or anything else up, you know. To to that house because it's not on a a regular road with where they would have more. More space.
Right, so Paul, that's a separate question from the six seventy four forty one. Um, I don't think six, I probably that's part of what the. Policy type reasons were that went into six seventy four forty one. But six seventy four forty one does not inherently require certain. Life safety, fire access things. But obviously, from the planning board's perspective. You you're allowed to to do that. Essentially with state statutes, they all tend to follow the same model, which is. You can't be any. Less strict than what we the state are telling you as the minimum, but you can be more strict. So. Those concerns, Paul, that you have are certainly legitimate concerns. But they don't matter as far as six seventy four forty one. If it satisfies the road. Bare minimum for the road for six seventy four forty one, then okay, great, you satisfy that statute. But if there are other concerns you have. Then obviously you can um use other aspects of the town ordinance um. And and land use plan and subdivision plan. And guidelines and ordinance uh and regulations. To say, we will, we need you to make the road X, Y, and Z for. Fire uh access, life safety purposes. So it it doesn't mean it's not valid. It just means you don't need to worry about that to satisfy six seventy four forty one.
So so I would ask you, Mark, is there any way to change? Those two lots to make them so they.
Yeah, I think.
Either have one less lot or you got the same amount of law, I think.
Instead of making, a lot lines will be a little different looking um. Will be a little bit hard looking, but we can move the line to satisfy. Requirements of county town. So basically, we can bar leg the lots around. So that way. We'll reduce the frontage on a couple of lots and lots will be rocky shaped. But they won't any longer be, so they'll have direct access through the lot.
Yeah, I think that if we table that and to do so that way Derek. Attorney like can have a chance to go back. They can discuss things as we are updating lots and we understand that that's a. Coming for the next meeting because we'll have that. Trust.
I just want to take one final second, Mark. I know I I I don't think we've ever actually met, and so I don't want anybody to. Think anything funny with me saying this, but I I just want to apologize. Obviously, since your counsel is not here, I didn't know that Derek wasn't going to be at the meeting. That I've thrown a sort of wrench into it, but is not to cause any problems, but just to accurately give my. Professional legal opinion on the statute. And so I'm happy to speak with him offline. Um, so that we can try and figure out the right answer to that um. So I apologize.
Which section of six seventy four forty one, which? Which item applies? Kind of look it up at the moment, I don't think you're kind of look that up, that statute.
A- a- absolutely. So six seventy four forty one, Roman numeral three. It's a very short section. It's only probably about three sentences. Uh, and it's really the last. Um, let me make sure. Um, because I'm looking at it in a cut and paste version, so let me actually pull up this the statute itself, so I'm not giving you.
Yeah, and I heard at the end of it, it said or, and I didn't know if it was am, and I didn't want to get into that. I figured I'd let attorney look get into that.
Yes, so the the very last sentence, so there is an or in there, meaning there's options by which to comply. But it is, so the very last sentence is is. It does not include a street from which the sole access to the lot. Is via a private easement or right of way. Unless such easement or right of way also meets the criteria set forth in sub paragraphs one, A, B, C, D. Or E, meaning six seventy four forty one, Roman numeral one, A, B, C, D, or E. So what that means in what I'm sharing with everybody tonight is that the easements that are there. In and of themselves. Have been deemed by Roman numeral three to not count. I know that sounds harsh the way I'm saying it, but to not count unless they also satisfy. The the street criteria established in six seventy four forty one.
Right, and that's where I was getting at and let attorney like comment to that, meaning I like the word or is out of those four, we need one of those in order for it to trigger.
Five, A, B, C, D, or E, yeah. Any one of those five? Some you won't be able to to do because it's essentially like a town road. Um, but there are other options that can satisfy six seventy four forty one one.
Perfect, and I think that what we'll do then, we'll have the engineers and attorney like can work with you, make sure we get clarity. So Ray, yourself. We can move forward with that and kind of keep going down the list for tonight to keep things moving.
Um, with that, um, permission of the chair, um, since I hadn't planned to uh join in this meeting. Um, is there anything else that you would want me to um hang around to advise on or sort of with your permission, I would sign off at this point?
Well, there's one more question.
Yeah, Jason, when we, when we were reviewing. Um, the mansion health properties. One of the applicants asked a question about. Stormwater. Um. Stormwater areas. Are those taking off? Anything that's that's constructed as a stormwater? Picture or a part of picture, is that taken off the square, square footage of lot requirements?
So I remember that question coming up and I didn't have a chance to um weigh in when I was. Sort of hastily departing the country um. And I've gotten back now and. I. I think that that gentleman made a a very good point. I don't have a definitive answer yet because I wanted to look at some cases to see if they analyze those things. Um, from the bare words of the. Ordinance. It seems like they would be carved out, but I I don't want to. Misadvise the board without verifying that, and I apologize just from getting back. I haven't um. Research that question to make sure I have a definitive answer, and I certainly don't want to. Create any. Burdens or problems from anybody like I just did now by um. Giving one answer and then having to change it. I don't want to do that again if I can avoid it.
Well, could you look into that?
Absolutely.
And let us know for that.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll um, I'll send a um. I saw the correspondence to Carol, so she's got that, like a memo from me answering that question specifically.
That was the only.
Okay, anyone else have any questions before we let Jason go? All right, thanks, Jason. Okay, no, we're good.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
So I just wanted to ask you, were you aware of what I was just talking about?
Yeah, I know what you're talking.
John.
Yeah, I I know what you're talking about. I don't believe it applies.
Okay.
You want to make sure. Stormwater practices are not on. Run common areas, okay.
And I thought that may be the case, but I weren't sure. I haven't reviewed all the plans unless there was anything that. That was on an individual lot that might be. Taken off of that.
Well, again, I also will point out that the middle lot size does not apply under the master plan. Of the approved. But regardless, I believe that our form of practice, we can confirm that that we both outs, we got two major. Form on our treatment practices that are outside the the lot.
Okay. Anything else from uh technical memorandum number three? Anyone had a question on?
Yeah.
Paul?
I I I raised, raised on, oh, I'm sorry, I'll do that.
But wasn't he going to run down the ones that he? Okay, was, I mean, you started this and started with number eight.
Uh, I only have one other one to discuss, really. All the rest of the ones. In this memo, you know, we've gone through with Horizon and. We'll catch up with Ray on a call outside of this meeting. Gone through them and comfortable that we can work it out with Ray or it's a plan revision or if there's a typo or whatever. The only other one I wanted to just. Talk about uh was number sixteen.
What I mean?
Correct, so.
Number sixteen? Yeah.
Page two or five?
Number three, number sixteen.
Yeah, are you, are you on the May third twenty twenty one memorandum?
I'm on May third twenty twenty one.
Two or five page.
Two of seven, I think it is.
Two, two of five.
Two of five, number sixteen.
It's above the one main connection?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you said.
Uh, I wanted to try and kind of where we're at with this comment. There's been some. Ray and I had a discussion about this today. Um, but what this involves is on our original submission. Our water main came down to the public side. We brought it down, doing easement.
Can I ask what sheet you're on so I can kind of follow?
Yeah, this is sheet S three.
F, S, S three.
It doesn't show a lot of it.
Right.
I get you on that one.
Yeah, thank you.
So our original submission had a lot of looping around. What we made, so we didn't have to get in. John picked up on that. The. PRV for the mains on the high pressure zone lands right in between here. So. Coming off of the new road and moving it around would be connecting to this zone. I think you can, you can do it. It's not practical, doesn't make sense because we would have to put a second PRV. In this project and you're going to two PRVs that are playing. So um, we. We did send the information over to Weston and Sampson. Um, they provided a proposal to do an analysis. Um, to us, I think it got to Ray on Monday. Ray and I talked about it today. I explained the situation. Uh, my discussions with Weston and Sampson say they agree with us that we should not be looping the water mains through there. So they're going to uh do that analysis and get us something in writing, just.
So can I ask what the benefits are from me to Ray? Ray, you on?
I am.
Can I ask you what the benefits and and negatives are? Little bit versus not looping, in your opinion?
Um, well, just in general, I mean, looping is the preferred option from a water quality standpoint, certainly. Um, but um, as Scott articulated, um, it doesn't make sense to have, you know, PRVs, you know, battling each other. So um, because of the. Um, I'm, I'm not entirely clear where the um, the current PRV vault is. My understanding. Um, is that there are, there's no PRV in the vault per se. It's just the, they they blind flange both ends of the. Lines coming into the vault. Um, but I believe it's somewhere near the penny base camp. John, do you know if where that is? Can you articulate where that is specifically?
I drove around today to look for it. I believe it's actually down by the Cedar Circle entrance.
So it's down by the Cedar Circle entrance?
There's a, there's a manhole in the middle of the road. It's marked water. And I believe that is.
So it is on the riverside of Cedar Circle or on the other side of Cedar Circle?
Downhill. Kind of heading toward um fireside, which is just down the hill of where Cedar Circle enters on.
Condos, you go down to the left.
Yeah, uphill over on the. Uphill, uphill the entrance where fireside is. Yeah, it's uphill over the garden, just by a little bit, right at the road there. I believe. That's the ball. Um, because I went up all the way looking for another structure that reflects a period of the ball. I didn't see anything all the way. And that makes sense. It wouldn't be out this eye as.
Is, is there any concern? Um, you guys have any concern about the quality of water issue there? And on a normal flow, with with people who live in town, they would be here all the time. But in that development like that, where people are maybe here for the winter and gone all summer or. You know, and then if you, if you don't have any concerns, I don't have any concerns. I'm just, just asking the question.
I mean, I think obviously it's more important flush that. Better at the end of that line more regularly than you might. After otherwise, make sure you scout sediment scour now. I'm assuming some of those houses will be occupied, so we'll get some useful.
I mean, there are developments. That don't have that now. I mean, some like up in Westwood, the other part of Westwood.
Yeah.
Um, where the water preplain is where the water line goes all the way.
We'll elaborate a little bit, Ray. As well, but the issue is that PRVs are very sensitive. Step them for an elevation and if one is off by a tenth of a pound over the other one, that one is.
If one is off by a tenth of a pound over the other, the backbone is going to be the one that's constantly taking all the blow. You know, and you can't. Very, very difficult to balance that exactly. Um so the both are being used, so then there's really no benefit in having.
So yeah, so I I didn't hear all that John said, but I think I heard most of what he said. So so essentially what what the recommendation is is to, since Weston and Sampson um has the computer model. Um would be to have Weston and Sampson actually take a look at the scenario, the situation. And make a recommendation as to where they think the best location for the PRV vault should be. Based on whether, you know, whether the. Uh and I'm assuming the the desire here of the um of Longfellow is to get. Uh Crooked Mountain serviced off the main pressure zone as opposed to the high pressure zone that's in height in uh South Peak. So um if that's the case, then the PRV vault should be located. It could appear, it's currently located based on the description, but the analysis should be done to to nail that nail that down.
This subdivision will need to be serviced off, high service. Um it'll need to be above the PRV because we have elevation above a thousand. In there, so we'll need the PRV downstream now have to be on the high side. Of the PRV, so then what the problem is that we got that that Westwood Sampson firm, firm is. If the PRV. Which is not a problem for us. Having the PRV, but the PRV is too low, then it's going to be pressure too high on the upstream side. In order to get the pressure you want on the downstream side. So it might be a few houses in there where the pressure with line exceeds. Hundred PSI, that's where that's the sweet spot. If you want that line to not be any higher than a hundred PSI. Of state. You can give waivers in specific circumstances, but they certainly don't like seat service. You can help that awful line is got more than.
So so my my recommendation here is rather than trying to engineer it here would be to let's let's put the issue in front of Weston and Sampson.
But you're gonna do that anyway, right?
Yep, so we're coordinating with Weston and Sampson on that as we speak.
Okay, Daniel, you have a hand up?
Yeah, a couple of questions on the um. You know, the eleven acres, is that included part of the ski trail proposed? I mean, can they do that with open, you know, green spaces, part of the ski area? I'm sorry? Okay, sorry, if we're kind of breaking up, it's hard to hear. And the other question I had was um. When you mentioned the manhole cover that said water in it or water on it, what did you, what does that mean? What is that? Is that part of the water system? Is it?
It's where the PRVs located.
Okay, okay. I was saying that's part of the water system and I'm like, oh, it shouldn't be so available to like access, you know, usually it's a closed system.
Be pretty healthy to pick that manhole.
It's a manhole cover at the edge of the road or in the middle of the road, it's buried underneath the road, just like. Many other components.
I can't, I can't hear him. Sorry.
So it it's a vault, um and it's the manhole covers are the same for sewer and and water vaults. Sewer manholes and water vaults, it's just the covers labeled so you can tell what it is. So when you go out there, pop manhole cover, you're not going to get a surprise. You're trying to get in the PRV vault and you're in a sewer manhole. So.
Right, right, right.
Very, it's an accepted practice to have a vault in a in a with a manhole cover like that.
Yeah. Because I'm I'm familiar with water systems and it had to be like closed, you know, where public can't go in and access it to put. You know, poisons and such, and so that's where, you know, it was kind of a red flag for me.
No access there, so this is not a, it's not like it's, and and I guess you could. You could argue that every fire hydrant would have access to the system technically, you know, where if someone wanted to pull up the fire hydrant and open that up. You could put something, but it would be, it'd be a very difficult point to access. You'd actually have to take the valve apart to get access to the water.
Right, right. Yeah, because I mean, even our pump system at Coolidge, we had the, you know, seal and lock the door so nobody can get access to it. You know, but. Just a thought, I just. Okay, thank you.
Any other board members have any questions? Let me, anything else? Technical memo? Want to open up some public comment? Motion open up public comment? Second. All in favor? Any member of the public like to speak on this? Motion to close public comment? Second. All in favor, hi.
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 It was easy.
Few um teased across and I stood up. Can you get those changes to us in two weeks?
Yeah. So I I just want to ask Ray while it's on, Ray, did you have any? Comments, questions about your uh. Technical memo number three that need to be. Expun- expanded on or?
Uh no, I think, I mean, I think the comments are pretty self-explanatory if you benchmark them against the plans. It's pretty easy to follow. There's nothing stands out.
I think you talked about bonding a little bit last time. Um are you working on a? Bonding requirement for this project?
Uh for Upper Crook and Mountain Road, uh. I didn't hear that you wanted a performance bond on Upper Crook and Mountain Road, did you?
That we had talked about that several times.
Yeah, we're happy to have a letter of credit. We're we're happy to do that, so we want to come up with what that number is, we can put that into the. Decision to have a letter of credit.
Yeah, not that I expect you to believe anytime soon, but you you never know, you do. The other, the other comment I had to make about this um. Was that because this goes under? The road goes under the ski slope, right? So is that that bridge? And the road width, is that going to be? Built wide enough or pedestrian, you're gonna have a sidewalk underneath that that bridge? Because instead of instead of having someone walking in the road, you know, because. That the the development up in here is going to be kind of like totally isolated, they're not going to be able to walk outside of the road.
Yes.
Once they get to that bridge.
We have enough space for people to walk and not be in the flow of traffic.
Yeah. Then you then you. Like that in there?
Yep, and that.
Excuse me, if I could interject, uh and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but there's um there is a sidewalk that's being proposed. On in within the limits of the bridge, right?
Almost under the bridge. It's about thirty feet from Botman to Botman.
We all.
Yeah, it's twenty two feet lines when you you put sidewalk just on one side of the bridge.
That's all I was. Bonding. Walkways. The construction. Um there was something else I had to. There's supposed to be a note. Comment note. Let's see, sheet uh. C two one twelve. C two point one two. Uh there was a note. There that said um. Residential development will commence after the road and drainage has been constructed. And stabilized. And I think that that's changed to say it and the water tank is online. Well, residential development above a thousand, whatever that thousand feet or whatever that's supposed to be, that won't start. Until after the water tank is online. If that that would.
I would just say that construction's starting, I'd like to say that in with the town approval, you know, meaning. If the town's underway with the water tank. Instead of waiting, because we know they're, you know, we're going to be giving them extensions to do that. Then we'd ask that it's after the town approval, so if we know it's imminent, it's happening, we can start, we can't get an occupancy permit. But at least we can start putting in a foundation, start our year ago.
I'll tell you why. Two tanks town put in. They perform where they were supposed to perform. So there was changes and that. I mean, it's not like you don't have. I'd like to see the tank in and see it perform the way that it was designed. And then. Then you go ahead and go above that thousand feet. Because. I just don't have the faith. Who was the ones that town that put in before? Didn't perform the way they were. So if you start building and all of a sudden. These. The water tanks not going, you know, as opposed to. Understandably, you're going to be. Going to work with whoever didn't do it, but the people who. Are building those houses may not have the pressure they think they. That's why, that's why I say I think that, you know, and the town. And the um. Where was it? It's that you're not supposed to, you weren't going to build above uh that thousand feet.
I think if we put there that the town, we need a letter from the town to let us start on that. You know, meaning, you know, we want to be able to work in conjunction with that. Um putting in a hard fast, it has to be up online. Knowing that we just want to start construction, I'm happy to say that there can't be occupants. Till there's adequate water.
So, I mean, you're going to risk building houses that are going to sit empty?
Maybe, because we have the ability to build in our own water. Bank, so we're, we know, it's, we have a self-help clause, if you will. So if we're working with the town and they need an extra few months. We don't want to be, we know our timeline to build our water tank is quite fast, it's on our property, there's a lot of things we've been looking at. So we want to not, if the residential component of a construction project, we want to start. And get started with the foundation and framing and working it, and if six months in, we say, hey, the town still hasn't. Started and done anything, that's when we have triggers that we would be able to move in a different direction and put our own tank in. So yes, we're taking that risk to have a house that's not. Able to be occupied. But it also allows us to not have to make that decision.
I guess I'd be concerned only in the back part that. People who you're selling to. If it should something like that happen and it doesn't form the way it was designed. We're going to come back to you, but the next thing we're going to end up is back in with the border sleuth and saying, hey. Bought this house over there, this tank was supposed to be like this and for God knows what what reason. And it's like you said, it does happen.
There is other ways, it's about the fire flow, so if this is about something, there's sister and there's other options, and if we have to go down that road. We want to look at it, the residential houses are taking us quite some time to build. As, you know, a year plus. So we're trying to make this, the purpose of this is we're saying yes on occupancy. But we're also saying in the meantime, we want to give as much time to the town to get things in order. As possible, so that's really the ask here. And it doesn't put anybody in. Any danger and the risk is still entirely on us as. The end, that that builder applicant.
I say. Think long with the argument that approve over there. Getting here, you're building, building all along. Whole part of the river. Got Cedar Circle. Got fireside. Got now you're coming in for, how many lots is this?
Quite, quite a few.
How many? Twenty eight. So I mean, you know. I would hope that it's all going to be back online by then because. Find the availability for people to do that anyway. That's why, that's why. I said I. Feel a lot more comfortable. Doing that, and then you've got seven more lots you want to go in for, like you said. And you've got a lot there already and that's. That feel better having having it online, making sure that it's working the way it's supposed to work.
So again, just to comment on, I mean. We've tied up our million and a half for years now, um so we are a hundred percent committed to that. There's not an issue or question. Not even just not, we've already paid for it, right? So we're taking the burden of this conversation, if you will. With the money spent. I would just say that in the effort of working, and I'm speaking on behalf of the town as a, in in the town's perspective that. All that that. Does for us, if we can't start construction. It just makes the clock much tighter onto the town. Meaning. They're going to be coming to us at a certain point saying, hey, we need to. We we gotta keep working together, that's how we've been helping and, you know, Scott's going to meetings to help with the town's water tank, we want to make this be successful, and we see the value in. What you're mentioning. But we don't want to be in a situation where we say we have to take our million and a half out and put it into our own tank right now because. We can't risk not starting on twenty homes, you know, we have a, you know, we don't want to get there, we want to help push. Work together to get this built for everybody. And we're taking the risk on the occupancy again, so we're taking that risk, we're just trying to give as much time as we can.
We don't have to make a decision on this, on that tonight anyway.
No, no.
But it it doesn't seem right for Mark to penalize. We for trying to help the town. On this, there's faster ways, we can get, if Mark came to me, said, John, why don't you and your team get this done fast? Forget about town tank. We can get it done a lot fast, we can figure out a way, so. Doesn't seem. Right, that. Project penalized, I don't think it's an unreasonable. Request. As part of.
Well, let me say this. So when you design this and develop. You were totally aware that. The elevation that used to be nine fifty. Went up to a thousand. Yep, and so the design was that there was nothing done above a thousand. You know, before or water tank came online. And that's, you know, so. This thousand is not like it. It just popped up today, Ray brought it up and then one of his technical demos, I think number one was number one. Um and you did.
But but I guess the question I would have is, how long does Mark's boat wait?
Yeah, but that's that 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 provision is still in place. Okay? They they can't be selling and occupying almost above thousand foot mark until that tank is there. Okay, so so so. They can't be occupying.
Yeah, okay. What's efforts you're going to build up and occupy?
Yeah, we would do that, because that's a risk that they're willing to take. And along with the. Burden of of working with the town and cooperating by doing this. So seriously, a drunk, it would have been a lot simpler for them to just build the tank you're supposed to build. It'd probably be. And we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So so so. They're taking their million and a half dollars, giving it to us and are. Delaying certain aspects of their project in order to. Really make things better for the town. At a huge savings to the town. And and to say that they. Build a road and put in fire hydrants and in in.
I bet you they couldn't put the rope. Building the house.
Well, if it if it's taken a a year plus to build the actual house. That that tank will be online and ready by the time they're ready to sell the house now.
Your hope.
And it takes, we can't. They can't occupy the house because it won't have water pressure enough.
But also keep in mind that we can't even, we have to build the road, right? So we have to build the road, get the, get all that done, then get a building permit. To then start the house, so it's like not even twelve months from now, it's really like eighteen months, twenty months from now, right? So why we're comfortable to take that risk is because we understand that if in twelve months from now. I need to call John and with his. A lot of resources to say, let's get going on this tank ASAP. Then that's where we're going to do that, and at that point, we've given the town every option we possibly could, as well as much help as we could. To give them that fair shot at getting theirs in. Opposed to us having to make that decision in say three, four months to say, hey, we can't risk it, we have to now move forward with the tank.
I think, yeah, and to our, to this. I think what we're really asking is. Put this on the land use permits and the discussion with select board, not your planning, basically as a condition. That Mark has satisfied select board. As it relates to the land use permits. And on the individual buildings and where the tank, we don't know when the tank progress is going to be, because honestly. If all of a sudden something comes out of the left field, this tank is delayed another year, I think, you know, like, you know, it's a problem. And we will, we'll figure something out that's fast track. To get water service to those homes, but I think again, we will come up with a solution. But I would think it'd be more efficient to have that discussion with select board on the land use permits and not site.
I tend to agree with you. I would ask for. Is a letter saying to hold the town how much? Now, with the homeowner can. Builds a building, can you water in a certain time? Town is not responsible for that part of it until the tank is done. So town is let, is absorbed any wrongdoing if it doesn't get finished in time.
Yeah, that's fine, because we, if we didn't have the ability of putting on our own tank, it'd be a different story, right? So if we were purely relying on outside people. I'd say the risk is too much, we'd be crazy to do all these things, right? But doing the street without the tank is a technical risk, right? Then. Doing all the things we're doing, we're trying to move forward as much as we can and have plans in front of you that in two weeks we'll be talking about buildings all above a thousand. Then we understand that this tank is, needs to happen at this point. And we've really done the best we can. Working with the town, meaning helping coordinate work that's done on site, helping, putting our money aside years ago, meaning we're not. I would have, I would have loved to kept that in the stock market and it would have done, you know, meaning the money's been. I would have, I would have loved to kept that in the stock market and it would have done, you know, meaning the money's been out there. So where we're asking now is to continue on that same mentality to give the town as much possible time before we have to exercise our outs in the agreement and get started on our own tank.
I tend to agree because right now, interest rates are going up. Probably will for a while. If, if your interest rates go up, you don't secure them now loans. It's going to go dramatically with it really adverse the sales of the building. Interest rates climbing. There, it's not just a one biopic view. It's like the whole pack, things are to be looked at.
Can we have anything else?
I, I, I think this discussion what Jennifer mental town to accept it. Building that tank with the rental operation. And into
It's not, what's going to do, what's going to happen? Let me just paint, and this is, I mean this in all, like due respect to this. If we leave the meeting and I said that was the case, I have to tell John, do our own tank immediately. I tell Derek, please give, like, give a heads up. We need our own tank in there. We're not going to give our million and a half anymore. So it doesn't, like, it, it makes my life look easier and it's easy. It's, we think we can actually do it for less than a million and a half. The million and a half we agreed upon was, it, at the time, a higher number. And now we're realizing with the infrastructure we're already putting in and everything happening that we could have actually done our own tank for a better price. We're keeping a million and a half. We're honoring our agreement and we're only extending it. The town has come to us and asked for over a year of extensions already, and we anticipate them coming back to us and asking for another extension. I want to do everything we can as a good team member and a good, you know, partner in the town to give them as much time as possible before we have to execute our own project. But if we are forced to do our own project, we have the ability, wherewithal and the speed on our side to do that. So if we have houses, houses half built or a, you know, a, a community building for South Peak half built, and all of a sudden we look at this and say, wow, we're in trouble. The town isn't being able to execute. We absolutely without question will have to move forward and put our own tank.
The only, the only part of that thing, doing assessment for that tank is to build above that thousand, what my friend.
For us, yes, but for the town, there's other things.
What's the other things? Use fire. And, and, and the main part is out.
To the town, build that tank that matches the elevation or the bridge. So that those two tanks serve the same
Downtown.
So, so. Right, but what's downtown and all the time. The main, what's called the main pressure. All right. In addition, it serves as a backup to the, the village. So, um, again, the PRV going over there. But it could be the backup and the fire thousand eight or anything that, that second. Now, let, let's say, state hall's front. Tom goes to tank. Rested and silencing designers. Um, you know, John, I know you're looking, if you're seeing what they're doing, Scott, you're seeing what they're doing, Ray, for seeing what they're doing. Let's say all these engineers screw up and we get a, a situation where the tank doesn't supply why I say whatever the highest house is, is up.
Or, or doesn't supply it up to the town. Is it? I mean, there's nothing really. Well, let me ask you that. I, is there anything that says what that tank is going to supply and how much it's going to be available to the town? Is there a agreement that says that?
It's a town's tank.
Like any other tank, tank's going to feed by gravity, put water down there.
I understand.
So, so the highest pressure is going to be at, or at the end of the, the end of the line, the most done town. This pressure is going to be on these walls that are looking at
Of any above a thousand feet. Correct.
So, so issue is going to be up there on, on the
But, but it's, there's a certain amount of supply.
Pressure to post those, it has a presence of those blocks. If that's the case, and all these individuals put up.
It's not just that.
Could you put in a booster pump or, or some other auxiliary thing that, that, that based on
So, absolutely. So the third, actually today, there is enough booster capacity in place today as we speak to serve this development for domestic support. The only issue is the fire. We could, I know that the town ordinance allows for areas that don't have water supply, put in our storage in the former cisterns or firebox. We could retool and say, you know what? We're going to use the existing booster station and we're going to put in two system. And be within that distance and that covers everything that we need covered and we're done. That would be, and, and we could safely supply water to those homes and safely cover the fire. We wouldn't have hydrants on that line. There'd be dry hydrants out there, but that would satisfy all the requirements. So we could do that. We could also build our own tank at a lower elevation. So shorter water main distance, that would supply adequate pressure to all the development that Mark wants to do. It wouldn't be high enough for the town's needs, but it would serve South Peak just fine. And, and that was the original point. That was the original plan to have South put its own tank in and a lower elevation than the town needs. Um, so there, it's really only going to provide, it'll provide a little bit of market benefit to our flow downtown below the PRV. But it would basically sort of provide fire flow to the high zone that's lacking. So those are the two options that we could easily pursue. Either one. Uh, we have it in the new subdivision, um, we have to count in love, Scott. Most of I think the uphill side of the road will be above a thousand. Yeah.
Yeah, we have, we have plans in front of you. Not tonight, but for the next hearings, we're going to be coming with more and more plans that are all above that thousand mark. So we want to keep things moving as we see fireside was two years, you know, it takes a long time to perform. We're actually occupancy is going to be the case. So all we're trying to do is work the best we can with the town when it comes to this.
And that's you just laid up my whole thing was that it's going to be probably a year, if not two years before you build anything up on this, in this new develop. You may build the road, you may build the, the hydrant, put the hydrants and all that, you know, the road infrastructure, but actually clear and start a lot up there, house lot up there, you're probably going to be two years. And at that, in that time, that water tank's supposed to be online anyway, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
So if that water tank is online, what's, what's, what's the?
Well, we would start the houses much sooner than that. So we're going to start the houses in conjunction. I mean, there's a lot of cut and fill that's beneficial when you're starting the houses. As we're going forward, we also want to be able to, if you're starting a foundation, as soon as the, you know, the binder's in, we want to move quickly on this road. Um, so these are things that say if the road's six months out, we want to be started as soon as we can on, on starting some of the homes.
Jim, I don't think your microphone is on. Not much better.
Yes, how about now?
It's still really soft. OJ, yours is really weak also.
Is this one weak as well?
No, that's loud and clear. You're like coming in best.
All the way up.
Put a battery in it.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, so I was asking Paul, you know, you want to submit a question to Jason Dennis, send an email to Carol.
I can do that.
All right. Does anyone have anything else in this subdivision for tonight?
Paul, make sure Ray's okay. He said, okay.
Ray, do you have any other comments you'd like to make?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion to continue this hearing to May twenty-second?
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing to May twenty-second.
All right, Paul seconded it. All right, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, we'll see in a few weeks. Take a short break.
I can check. I thought you did, but, um, I checked. The, the April ones, yeah, the April. Okay, I can make sure. I, I usually count if there's anything, but we'll make sure. I think I had asked Jason to review that six seventy-four twenty-one.
Okay.
Roman number four.
Yep.
B. That was what phase development.
How much they could have taken apart? Put that here email to.
I will. I'll send it to you and Carol. Right there.
Yes. Go on, man. Yeah, we can bring that up. Oh, you didn't contact him? Well, we said we're going to talk about this meeting, so yeah.
He's here. Everybody except for the
Ray Corvus, I don't know.
Who's iPhone twelve? iPhone twelve, can you identify yourself?
Carol, can you send iPhone twelve like a message just to see? You feel it? I don't know. I thought there was a way you can message.
You could turn them off and that way they
You can send them a private message. Yeah. In the chat function. And send like a private message or instant message. But if they're not paying attention to the sound and they're not
Yeah, they're always on the meetings, but they never respond when we ask who they are.
Well, if they don't want to tell you who they are, I guess. They have the right
It's a public area and they, they could be here.
Cut them off by accident. One, two, three, he's okay.
We're tech. Just give them two minutes and we'll move on. While the meeting back to order. Updating, we got a drainage problem between Raymond Burgland, Levin School Street, Jane Ludwig, twelve Pleasant Street. A solution from planning board meeting starting on June eighth, twenty twenty-two. So let me start with Ray Corvus. He's reviewed the plan that was submitted. He had a few questions.
So do you have a specific, specific questions or you just want me to?
He had made a few comments. You want to go over, over those for us?
Here, let me just, let me just pull them up here quickly. So Carol asked us to review the, um, submission that was made by the, um, I, I believe it's the property owner, um. We understand that there's a, the issue at hand is that, uh, perhaps there's some runoff that's migrating from um, Mr. Burgland's property, which is lot ninety-eight onto lot ninety-two, which sits directly behind it. And, um, so we took a look at what they were proposing to do. It's a, um, landscape plan. Uh, and what they're proposing to do in order to address that based on a review of the plan is that they were, um, addressing the runoff issue on their lot onto an adjoining lot by proposing an infiltration trench and dry well to be installed at the property line. Essentially, we, our understanding based on the review is that this would essentially capture any of the runoff coming off of lot ninety-eight and trapping it and infiltrating it into the ground as opposed to having it migrate across the property line. They're also proposing to put what looks like, um, drip edge around the perimeter of the house and also the garage. That would obviously capture any runoff coming off of the roof, the respective roofs. Um, we haven't done a site visit, so we can't confirm, you know, um, kind of the lay of the land, but it appears from just our review through Google Earth that uh, the driveway appears and it makes sense. The driveway appears to slope away from the, uh, garage to the roadway. So uh, given the size of the lot, the lot is pretty much occupied by impervious surface between the building and also driveway. It seems like most of the runoff coming off of the buildings is mitigated and most of the runoff from the driveway actually goes to the roadway. So that's not an issue. So that's, that is our interpretation of the plan that was submitted. We haven't had a chance to talk to the property owner yet or the landscape, um. I believe it's a landscape architect who did the plan. If not, it was the landscaper who did the plan. Now, we haven't had a chance to talk to them as well to confirm what our assumptions are based on a review.
Okay. I can speak up right into the mic.
Excuse me, Jim, Mike, I can't hear anything.
Ray can. Can you put her mic up?
It's all the way up.
It's all the way up already. They're all all the way up. Okay.
Great first.
I don't know.
Can you hear me now, Ray?
Just barely, if you can speak up, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, I can talk louder, is this loud enough?
That, that's better, that's, that's good, I think I can get that.
Okay, um, I just wanted to say that we haven't met with. First one either, we've set up for three or four meetings. And two to three years, so she's looking at the driveway, that has water.
I'm, I'm sorry, it's still cutting out, I can't hear.
Why don't you speak, Stevie, maybe you're.
Yeah.
There you go, another bolt on.
They're still not working.
Is it, you know, is it possible there are too many microphones on, maybe we shut that one off, it's not being used.
It'll shut all of us off.
You shouldn't have to do that with the system. I'd suggest you contact the person that you bought it from and say, hey, what's going on here?
Yeah, it's still really faint, I'm sorry, if you borrow Jim's.
Yeah, I, I agree, I can't hear it either.
We still can't hear you, honey, I'm sorry.
I can hear you, but you know, you're.
Yeah, I can't, I don't know if Ray can, but I can't.
I, I cannot.
Yeah, so Jane's hand has been two to three years without a resolution.
So he asked to move the gas tank, I can't move them there because they're in. The person that owns the house next to me came over and talked to me about it, she, I didn't say a word about it, the land or anything, she said, wow, this is really toxic. She's slopping through water, and this is what we've been doing, we're getting into our basement. He said destroying the kitchen, falling in to the. Ground underneath, and my patio, I have a picture of it here, if you'd like to look at it, it's gorgeous, it was gorgeous. It's no longer gorgeous, it's bunked in it, dumped. So he allowed this to happen two or three years, and I know this is a simple thing, so don't worry about that. But I wanted to let you know that it isn't just the driveway that we take away the water, it's something to be, have to be something that's built well. Very well, because if you look at his, honest to word, it's like four feet high. The mound land, you know, dirt, piled up like this on both sides. My fence falling into my patio. Absolutely weird, there's mud, mud underneath it. And so Haydale didn't laugh at all, so. He's not a good neighbor, he was telling you.
Okay, you know, let's kind of stick to the facts without. Paul.
Yeah. Ray, this Paul, can you hear me?
Yes, Paul.
So. And looking at your memo, one of the things that you noted in there was that the effectiveness of the infiltration practices is subject to surface conditions. You also talk about the, you know, the features and whether or not they're going to work. And it's hard to tell what the subsurface. Even though they put those basins in, it's hard to tell whether or not they're going to drain off enough water to be able to to effectively deal with the. The water that's on the surface. Is that something that they should dig some test pits for first to find out? Whether or not this whole, this whole design is going to even work?
Yeah, I mean, again, they're not, they haven't shown anything on their, on their documentation about the subsurface conditions, so yeah, taking a test pit. They'd be able to determine what the seasonal high water table is. And they would also get a sense, if they do an infiltration test, then they would get a sense of what the saturated conductivity of the soil is, which will give them a better idea as to whether the infiltration practices that they're proposing will actually. Stand the test of time, so that additional information would certainly inform the decision making for the design of the infiltration practices.
That was the only question I had, but I mean, as, as Jane said, we have. Mr. Burlinger has said he was going to start on this thing, he hired him, he's shown us that he paid people, he's got a check, he's shown us the plan. But nothing started yet, I realize it's only the first week of May, but.
Right. Well, he sent an email.
We've had.
Three. Said, I'll just read, it says, I've been told that they will start work at the end, at the late end of next week, finally, I'm pushing them every day on this one now. I've also now paid the deposit on, on the paving company due to the driveway and agree with Ray K about ensuring it drains away from the homes and towards the street. Also have lined up new fences to be put in after the landscaping work is complete, late May slash early June.
Do we know if they included rain gutters on the structures to be incorporated into the water mitigation?
Well, Danielle, I thi- I think what they're proposing to do, and again, they don't have details that indicate like the, the width, the, the depth of, you know, the infiltration practices, but they're showing what appears to be a drip edge around the perimeter of the buildings. So the water would simply run off the, you know, the edge of the roof line and it would drop into those infiltration. Practices and the water would get absorbed into the ground. So adding gutters wouldn't necessarily do anything in that case.
Okay.
Let's get off the.
So around the edge of the house, there's no gutters, but the water comes off and drips down into a crushed stone. Perimeter around the house and collects it evenly rather than guttering it all into one particular spot, is that, that?
That's, that's our interpretation of what that plan says, so again, as you see on the plan, they're just showing a plan view. They're not showing you what is the, what is the depth of those infiltration practices, I mean, is it only six inches, is it four feet? They're not defining that on the plan, that's one of the things that we identified that maybe the town wants to get some additional information on.
You gotta make sure that what he's gonna, where he's putting all the water, that it's gonna take it, because if it's not gonna take it, then.
Yeah, it's gonna end up in his own basement, unfortunately.
Right.
Carol.
I did forward Ray's comments to Mr. Burgland. So if you'll notice that that email is in response to yours. I mean, I don't know what is the right answer, but I did forward it to him.
Hey, hey, call it, it says, great, thanks for the update.
Okay.
I'll speak, I'll speak with the landscapers to make the driveway larger, larger in size, as Ray points out.
He, he's supposed to start this next week, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, to be clear, we didn't make any recommendation relative to driveway, we, we just identified that we assumed. That it drains back towards the road, so we, we're not suggesting that he do anything to the driveway, there was no recommendation. So just want to be clear on that.
So I guess my question is, is. Do you want the planning board to? Put a stop to him doing this next week, so that, that it make him dig test pits and, and get a, a depth designed array, or do we? Go forward and, and I guess just make them aware that. They need to know how saturated the soil is before they put it, but let it be going.
He's, he's overseas, Anne.
One of them by bit.
Well, see, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking that perhaps we should, you know, invite him to do these test pits and get better elevations. Because if he does the work and it fails, then what?
I, I would think just, just ask, tell him that.
Just tell him there's some risk.
Advising, advising him that we, we think he should dig a test pit to make sure that, that the ground is gonna take what he's. Putting into there, because we, we don't want him to spend the money, obviously. And if he spends the money and doesn't satisfy him, it's not gonna satisfy. The whole issue, so. You know, to me. They, they can do a test pit while they're, they're installing, right, it, it's not a big deal to do that.
A test pit, it could be the, the pin that they're gonna use, and if it's, if it's saturated, they, they gotta keep digging and, and.
Well, if it's saturated, it's a problem anyway, again, yeah. What do you think, Ray?
Uh, yeah, I mean, if they do a test pit, just make sure that who's ever doing the observation on the test pitting is qualified to know what they're looking at when it comes to soil. Classifications and the seasonal high water. It can't be, it can't be just a guy who, you know, rakes lawns.
So Ray, let me ask you a question, are, are you willing to come up and, and take a look at that when he does that?
Uh, no, they should hi- they should hire soils, soil scientists to do that. We're not gonna come up and, you know, look at his test pit and, you know, sign off on it, he should have his landscape architect come out there and do that, they can, they could, they probably have somebody on staff can actually do that. The design should stay with the designer at this point.
Well, then we need to send him. And I'd recommend that we send him a. A memo, a, a email suggesting that he, that saying that planning board suggests that he dig a test pit to make sure that. And that the ground will take the water.
Craig, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know who does, who does test pits, but I'm sure as Ray said, the landscaper probably has somebody that they use.
Yeah, and, and again, I don't even know if I'd call it a test pit as much as having someone on site to observe the soil conditions and the high, what you call the high water level mark or the.
It's the seasonal high water table.
Seasonal high water table and the soil conditions. And make sure that the, the, the. Dry well is appropriately sized based on those two conditions.
Or even, I mean, looking at the site map, but I'm not even sure who's gonna access the area, I mean, the existing deck is gonna stay in place, so I'm. I mean, how do you even get a machine back there, are they planning on hand digging it?
Oh, no, it's a small machine, you get it to the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean. Yeah, you could probably get a mini excavator up the driveway into the backyard.
I think, yeah.
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 I mean, based on what they took out of there when, when they dug that full foundation, it was all gravel in there, I, I'm surprised that stays, water would stay, yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to send him a note quick if we're gonna do this, so they can, you know. Get moving on the project.
I'll make a motion that was.
Hold on, do I say something?
Oh, we got thirty-one inch, we're gonna need it up. If everything's going over to the, the dry well, then it won't matter. I'll make a motion that we send an email to him and. Ask him to do what? How'd you put it, oh, did it, high, the seasonal height, the check the soil. For the seasonal high water. Table and permeability of the.
Soil condition.
Soil condition, to make sure that it will accept the water that you send into it. We don't want, I'm, like I said, we don't want to spend the money, we don't want. To not work either, so. I'll make.
We should ask for a clarification on the timeline too, and, you know, start.
We should just start.
Yeah, start and completion date. I mean, because the impact on the neighbors is pretty substantial and it needs to be mitigated, it's, it's gone on too long.
Well, he, he just said, he said in this. Email that he was gonna start next week, so. I mean, that's, he's gonna tell you the same thing, right, it's gonna start next week.
Yeah.
Well, but he, he's, now he's put it in writing again, so.
Yeah, I mean, he was supposed to start last fall.
Yeah.
And it's not any fault of his, I'm not saying that, it's just, you know, contractors are busy, they get overbooked and it's, it's hard to, to pin him down.
Well, he's given us a substantial deposit, I would think he'd be after him to get them, get moving.
I mean, I see it all the time and where I work, so it's, it's not uncommon, no.
Can we send him the email?
Okay, to request, uh, send him an email requesting an engineer to observe the soil conditions and the seasonal high water level and install. An appropriate size system.
Yeah, it was a soil scientist, I think Ray called it.
Yes.
Not, not an engineer, okay.
It's, it's a soil. Yeah, I mean, people who designed septic systems, I don't know who they typically use, do they use cells or do they, maybe just.
You need a septic designer, would tell, would, would, you know, they'd have someone come out and dig a test pit to see if the water would percolate.
Or an engineer, in short.
Just want to make sure.
Or wetlands.
Yeah, I don't think that's for us to decide who does it.
Right, it's up to him.
No, but he's overseas, so I mean, you know, he might say, who can I get?
Cause you can get a qualified professional, there's a lot of them out there, there's a lot of them out there in his backyard, so.
So why should we call it a qualified professional rather than a soil scientist?
Yeah, I would just call it qualified professional.
That's fine.
All right, so. You want to put this on the agenda, just so it doesn't get dropped the agenda?
I would.
Just another month?
Just do a follow up in a month, see if.
Yeah.
It was built, made a difference.
Or nothing.
Working on a fence.
Alright, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on. So the first meeting in June is, uh, June twelfth. Motion to continue this matter, June twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, let's go, uh, let's go back to the minutes.
Excuse me, Jim, am I, am I all set, do you need me for anything else?
Oh, I'll set, Ray, thanks for your participation.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening, everyone.
You too.
Bye, Ray.
You can be, Danielle.
I'm sorry.
You hear me?
Just keep talking louder.
All right, so we're on the, um, the meeting's April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. We had a question about the, about his list. So, you know, it's, um. It's pretty detailed, really, with, with all the properties, to list all the properties every butter owns, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I mean, do they volunteer this when they sign in, how do? Right. Right, no, I understand, but usually get their name and address, right?
A lot of people won't give you that. What was your question about anyway, or do you, you were the one who brought it up?
The, I'm not, the, um, attendees list used to just be a list of people.
Right.
Now it has become a spreadsheet. That, I mean, Carol, there's nothing to do. A substantial amount of time to put that together. I, I mean. Just look, I don't have it in front of me, but, but just look at, at, at Jesse saying. Okay, you, you must have researched every property that he owns, every LLC that he's been, that he's involved with. And, and, and put all of that information in his home phone and it, it, like, we can just say, you know, you know, Joe Smith. With that. Uh, his, his contact information, is that address some? Some of the people have phone numbers, some of them just had addresses, home addresses, I just think it's a wealth of information, we need to list who's here at the meeting. And if it's Joe Smith, I think I should say Joe Smith. I think if it's Joe Smith, who's the attorney or engineer working with an applicant, we could say Joe Smith from, from ABC Lawyer Company or ABC Engineering Company. Because they're representing an applicant, but if someone's here, just because they're here. I, I, I see zero value in, in listing all of these, the, the properties that they own and LLCs that they're involved with. We, we never used to do that, I, I, it would seem like there was a switch and. I just wanted the board to talk about it and.
Can I make a motion? I'll make a motion that from now on, that we only put the name of the person attending. And if they have a, a professional affiliation that we know of. And if they have a professional affiliation that we know of. That's it. Brian Norton, Lumont Recreation Corporation. OJ Robinson, Board Selectman Chair. You know, something like that, and that's it. That's it. You want to second that motion, we can get this thing done.
Oh, I'm in discussion.
A couple more things um, that if if someone is attending, first of all. When I'm on the um, list or when Corinne is on the list, we're, we're listed under. Um, either uh, board members or town staff. We don't need to be, again, let's list it as a guest. But if you, if you look at the minutes, Corinne is present as the town manager, and then she's present on the guest list. And I'm just saying, let's just leave, leave the professionals up. Not the professionals, the.
The attendees.
Board members and. Town staff up at the beginning of the. List and then list the guests just separately. Then I think if there's someone who's online and their name is iPhone twelve. We should leave it as iPhone twelve without guessing who they might be or what.
I disagree with that. I, I wouldn't even put iPhone twelve on there. If they don't want to tell you who they are.
Well, usually.
If, if that's the way they're identifying themselves. Okay?
How are you gonna know who iPhone twelve? If, if someone walks in later on and says.
Well, what if, what if someone's on there and their name's Joe?
Yeah, she, she just put Joe and leave it at that.
Well, you ask Joe, can you identify who who you are?
And if they don't identify themselves, we don't guess.
Right. Really? So, just, you know, you put like Joe and you put unidentified member of the public, and if you're.
We always, we always asked who they were, and if they don't identify themselves, then they, to me, they shouldn't go on there. You don't have to identify who who you are. On, on the Zoom, I'll bet if you look at.
Stop asking who you are, you don't have to identify yourself.
I don't know, I mean, to me, it gets too gimmicky, but if you want to attend, identify who you are, if you don't.
I, I guess it doesn't matter to me whether we put iPhone twelve or not. But what I don't want is, is if.
I agree with you on the other one.
I thought it guessed that it's Paul Bowden and then write down what, what.
I hear you, I'm there with you. You don't have to worry about me identifying myself, I'll tell you.
Town doesn't want to be the source of the information, basically, if they volunteer it.
I mean, I, I think keep it as simple as you can.
I agree.
And 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 I'm glad you brought it up, because I think that's, that's all it really needs to be, would save Carol some time and.
Can I bring up a point also? Do you mind? When they're coming to the planning board and they're presenting something, then I think they should. Have everything prepared in advance and not just scramble and. Throw things at the table so that like Ray Korver and others that, you know, attend. Can review and prepare and um, be ready for comment instead of just um.
Okay, we're in the abouters list now, though. Let's, let's kind of stick with that.
Alright, sorry.
So I made a motion to do that.
Okay, go ahead.
I will second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right, that carries. All right. Danielle, did you want to, you can bring that up now?
Yes, about how everybody, you know, that's presenting at the meeting should be, you know, prepared well in advance. Instead of the night of the meeting. So, everybody that's involved, you know, attorneys, engineers can all review and comment, you know, the night of. Instead of uh, not having all the information available.
If I could speak to that. OJ has brought this up before Danielle, and what he said is, and he's right. That. When people bring information in. Or, in case that they give it the um. They give it to the town. Carol. And we haven't had a chance to properly review it. We can always say we haven't had a chance to properly review this. We want to wait for another meeting. We want to go another meeting. Give us more time to review it. Naturally, that, that does work, so.
It does to a point, but I mean, they have a, you know, weeks in advance to prepare and. You know, a lot of the times, they're, they're still not prepared.
Oh, we can't, we can't refuse, refuse it, we don't have to act upon it.
No, I'm not saying we can't refuse it, but just to really encourage them to be better prepared.
Hey, Carol?
Carol should have a microphone over there.
Yeah, she's bringing a microphone over there.
We should all have headsets or something.
Um, the applicants had been told that they're supposed to have the stuff in and with before. And the more they business with you, the more they realize that they can get away without doing that. So, he didn't want us specifically ask them for stuff. Like, for example, I wanted to have my subdue day maps for tonight's meeting. And multiple reaching out to them and reaching out to them and nothing. And then they came in here and then threw a couple of. You know, the uh, open space plan. Which nobody online has. None of us had a chance to look at it. And then the plan, uh, the plan that I saw one page of, um, from where he was reviewing it. Um, the plan looked really different than the plan that I showed you the last time. Which is why I reached out again, and I said, I need the plans. And then they said, well, don't worry about it.
Talking about a pending application.
I wouldn't get, get them to really comply. I mean, what can we do to get them to comply?
Very simple.
So, if you, if you just let them get away with it, then they know that, that's not really a deadline for them.
Right, well, we need to make it a deadline for them. I mean, if they know that the, that we're gonna have a meeting on a certain day or give them a month or come back in two weeks and they're still not ready.
The information in timely manner, we weren't able to make a decision, so how does, so that hurts them more than it does us.
It does, and we shouldn't hold that their conversation, if they're not prepared, then don't let them talk.
Do you want to deny, you think? I, I don't know, I mean, I don't think we should just, just deny it, say, well, you didn't get your stuff in, goodbye.
Well, they're not gonna change their ways if we don't do something. You know, and it, it is, I mean, even, you know. Tonight, you know, not all the information was uh, was present, and it was hard, you know, and he was apologizing several times. But that's just, just an opinion.
Is your mic on?
Yeah.
We totally can't encourage them to get it there. It's time for us to get it to, you know, distribute it to the, to the members. But I also don't want to forbid them. Or discourage them to bring something in. Um, that they can, like, pass out, explain and let us ask questions out here at this meeting. I think by doing that, they've given us a concrete. Reason, and I don't want to say excuse, but reason to not make a decision on it tonight, just got it tonight. So, so in other words, if, if they're bringing in a new designer, a blue map, or open space plan, whatever it is tonight. I find it helpful to have them explain it to us in person rather than email this. Um, and and then.
Plus, when they do that, we have two weeks to to digest what we've heard.
And to not make a decision on something, if it's a, you know, an important piece of new information, I mean, no idea about, it gets presented to us. At the meeting rather than days ahead. That's, you know.
So, my question would be. And I, I agree somewhat with. I've always agreed with what you said in that regard, because I used to be, I mean, where Danielle's come up from, if you remember, I always said. Get it in before the meeting, and you, I listened to what you said, and it didn't make sense. But I think, so my question to you is, how many? Members does it take before they say? Is it just one member that says it, or Danielle and I say, hey, look, we need a little more time to digest that with the board, then just take. Two people saying that before you don't, don't make that decision?
You need three yes votes to continue the hearing. Like anything else.
Oh, okay.
You can make your point, well, I don't think we have enough information.
Well, no, 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 if I said, or Danielle said. I'm, we just got this information tonight, I'd like a little more time to digest it. Are you saying it takes three to say that before you?
Yeah, because rest could say, well, we've, I think we have enough information.
But who are you, but who are you, or you or me? Tell someone else that. They want to think about it a little more and do a little more research.
It's majority, majority vote, you know, one or two people can't make the decision.
Asking a question, that's all, don't shoot the message.
If, if it's a, if it's a detail of a plan. That I have no expertise in, they're, they're gonna take a, a, a two inch wall line and make it. Free it world. Because that's why it's a lot. And, and, and they bring it that in at, at the, at the last minute, um. I mean, I don't have the expertise to judge that. Okay, but if they bring in something that's, you know, simple, stupid.
Like they added, you know, made one, one lot ten feet bigger and the other one ten feet smaller, then we don't have to wait on that. So, I mean, it's up to, I think it's up to us to use our common sense and judgment.
To look at it, investigate it, read the R S A, or is this like just a simple, stupid thing that, that?
Yeah, I struggle with what we did, you know, we were doing tonight with the water. I know you feel the way you do. I feel the way I do. I know that in the minutes, it was, when we first did all this, it was, it was only gonna be just, just the road. And hydrants, now it's the road, the hydrants and. And more, but, but I know I'm just using that for an example, so I feel a lot different that I need more time to, to think about that. What they're saying versus really how I, how I feel and my reasoning for it, you know, I need more time to be able to. Look into all of that, that, you know, it doesn't mean you're right, I'm right, I'm just saying, I need more time doing it. And I think it's, I think that I should have that. I, to look into that.
You know, I mean, I guess. One or two people could just make it to, to sit there, well, I don't think I have enough information. Another meeting, oh, I don't have enough information.
Oh, I know.
You know, and then we could never, we would never make decisions.
Oh, you're right there, too.
If it's something specific, especially if they bring in a piece of paper. Say, no, I know we should have gotten this a week ago, but I'm bringing it to you just right now. I would say, okay, go and explain it and answer some questions about it, but then give us some time, time to. So.
She has any questions about us and maybe that's the reason.
You know, state statute says we're supposed to assist the applicant, so if we're gonna say, well, you didn't get your information in, we're just gonna string you along, I mean, we're not really assisting.
But they, look. And I, and, and I agree with you, but I also, I'm hearing what. Carol's saying and stuff like that, is that if you can train them to bring in all the stuff at the, at one time, that truly does make it the right way. It gives everybody the chance.
Dennis is sending them emails by thirty and setting them to four or five. They can't be your sixth public.
Jason Bennett, oh, yeah, I know.
I mean, again, it's just common sense and judgment. I mean, you have to use your judgment, say, well, gee, that's, you know, we can make a decision now. Or no, we need to have it reviewed.
And um, one of the last few weeks.
Right, well, if you get an opinion from. From our attorney, you know, during the meeting, you say, what do you got to think on that, you know? Should know you, if you can't trust your attorney, then you need to get someone else.
Yeah, with that, I mean, the question that I, that I had asked about that was. They didn't want to do it till after.
Well, I asked the question, are we gonna give conservation easement right away? And he said, yes. Okay, well. I didn't, I guess I didn't hear, I didn't hear that part of.
Nothing's come, nothing's come to us, I think.
Well, the prop, the current property owner grants easement. You know, that's not what I, that's, you know, again, we, we talk, we shouldn't get into pending applications. Right. Right. All right, anyone have anything else to say on this?
The microphones are terrible. There's gotta be a better way, but no, I just wanted to bring that up because it was the thoughts, and I thought it would, you know, in turn, might save Carol some time and energy. And, and all that she does.
Hey. All right. Moving on. Michael, you want to come up? Yeah. Who?
The red slide.
They didn't come in, you didn't call them. Yeah, but they were on the agenda for last, last meeting too. All right, so we read you, we've read your letter. What can you tell us?
The microphone isn't working, I'm sorry, you guys. I mean, if it's gonna be transcribed, it's gonna be impossible. No.
Yeah, Carol, these things aren't rechargeable, are they just?
Do they have batteries in them?
Yeah, they do, so.
So, that's, that's where my perspective is, plus I live there, I plan on living here, so uh, I'll learn and. Just feel like I'd like to be part of uh, a work.
Okay, you know, we're here to midnight quite, quite a bit lately. Yeah, it won't be. Two meetings a month. And you'd be an alternate, so you'd, you'd be seated in one of the regular five members isn't here.
Would, would you be willing to go to training sessions about planning?
Absolutely.
Saturday.
But you already had to register, right, to get to that?
Yeah, it's online now, right? Yeah.
Is it registration still open?
Well, we got the letter.
Anyway, let's go back.
Okay.
Well, that's what I was asking, just trying.
No, it's fine.
Live here, I have a business here.
So, you're operating your business here out of, out of Lincoln?
Yes, yeah, I do uh, mostly remodels in front of stuff like everybody else. So, uh, being with, I'm listening to everything tonight, uh, you know. Hearing the same old thing again. But um. I hope to bring something to the table. And again, just want to be part of uh, solutions, you might say, and uh, be involved.
Okay.
So, where do you, where do you come from?
Originally from Rhode Island. From right here and. Um, we, family and I have been coming up here since nineteen seventy one.
What'd you do in Rhode Island? Same thing?
Thanks, I did um. Computer work actually, yeah. System engineer, um, setting up network. Work station, printing stations. Then I got sick and tired of that after about nineteen years of doing that, so I wanted to do something with my hands instead of vertical. And uh, I changed and planted operating three and.
Did you mostly just residential or do you do any commercial stuff or?
Okay. Anyone have anything else? Well, no, it's still on, you want to ask?
Yeah.
Okay, so. So, we need, go ahead. So we need, go ahead.
I'll, I'll make, I would guess I'll nominate him.
Someone has to nominate him.
I'll nominate um, Michael Irochi. Irochi, okay, I'll nominate Michael Irochi to be an alternate member of the plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Danielle? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
Term, the term for an alternate is a, is a year. Um, and you're coming in.
So you'll be up next town meeting?
Alternate?
No, alternates get named every year, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, well.
They're appointed by the, they're appointed by the board, but I think that their, their position has to be re- um. Reappointed every year as an alternate, the only three-year appointment, I believe, is the, the vote elected. I, I know we've never done it, but I think, I believe. Stat, if you look the statute, I think, they have to look it up, anyway, you got a year. The statute goes by. If you look at the statute for, who appoints them and for how long they're appointed, I think. Right? You used to be a.
Yeah, I.
I believe it's a year, because I think that's what I was granted when I was an alternate.
I think so, I think you have to reappointed every year.
Okay.
But it, it, should look it up.
Next year, we'll figure out when.
Okay, so right, so right now, he's appointed for a year and then.
We'll look it up.
And then if it turns out it's longer, we have, next March, we can appoint him for two years or three years, whatever it is. All right, thank you, all right, so we have one other piece of business with, with Forest Ridge.
Oh, wanna talk about that?
Go ahead.
Nate and Rick looked at the drainage on Mansion Hill Drive.
To tie in that.
And they both, they looked at it, discussed it, they both approved of tying the Mansion Hill.
Good.
Tension pond into the stormwater drain on Mansion Hill Drive.
That catch basin, yeah, okay. All right. All right, so there's a question of um, Forest Ridge.
Several transfer stations.
Yes.
Gay hearing, I had to do the. The gardens, the gardens were approved way before the different roads. Transfer station, the first of Lincoln in two thousand ten. Kind of recent issue of the South Hill or year and two one, the bears getting in and discovered, um. Bottom line is that, for the pines. Is the only development that kind of stood sense. Um. Well, they did not, um. And you know, I believe that I need. He has a lot of different. He's never taught them to be small, separate.
If I can speak to this just a little bit, I. When this originally happened. They came in to put that, that first. Crash. Slash recycling area in. Um, and that's my mother was alive, and she, they had a, they had a problem with all the noise and the smell and everything over there, so. What was done, what they agreed to, it, it wasn't just for. It wasn't just for the pines. If you, i- if you look on that, I don't know, the planning sent from uh. Uh, the May eighth one sent from planning, we look on the second page. Number four, it says the recycling site shall be limited to the. Let's talk about the new one. So be limited for the use of the number of units currently built. Right, but then it, 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 right, but it was supposed to be currently built, so anything after. Anything after the two thousand and eleven. Was supposed to go into other. Recycling places.
So every village it was at is supposed to have their own recycling place, not.
Well, it, it was only a forest ridge, right, right, but only a forest ridge, there wasn't supposed to be any more trash coming into that one. All the other units that were built after two thousand and eleven were supposed to have their own recycling.
Okay.
And, and, and that was. That's what it said, and if you look at. The conditions of approval, it says the applicant. Propeller shall provide a separate recycling center to make separate provisions for the trash removal for, for the pines at Forest Ridge, so the pines had to have their own.
So has the pines done that?
And they, no, and they agreed, they agreed to do that. So that a- all the other units would. Wouldn't be using that, that one place. Can they use a town? Anyone can use a town, but they were supposed to, the pines was, I mean, they were supposed to still build that separate one, because what happens now is. Everybody's using that one down there. And it gets hauled more and stinks more and the bears come down there more, so it really.
Yeah, I mean, they're huge, I don't, I, I mean, something like that, they ought to have like a bigger compactor, you know, instead of.
And it was a condition of approval. And they came back in for something, that's why I brought it back up.
Came back in.
So.
So that's my next question.
Passed away.
And a lot of the parts of the project are separated up. So when the application initially came from uh, Jefferson.
Which David Jaeger was. Well, it was one, David Jaeger was one to come in and present it for the.
Okay, so.
So my question is.
So is the homeowner association in control of that development now? I don't think the developers, the original developer, the successor developers could control. I would, I would think that's been turned over to the unit owners.
And. And then Brian was saying, well, good to her, like you only meant to. Um, deal with recycling, you know, the trash removal. Big place.
I was supposed to, I thought it was.
Really meant for all of those services.
Right.
So definitely. But they're not, they're still not part of the master association. Not a junior association, they're kind of their own.
It was supposed to be for both, because. It, it was. The original. There was the original intent, was because there was so much trash going in there, so.
African property managers are provided a separate recycling center and make separate provisions for trash removal that are timed for it. Pines and forfeit shall not use the present recycling center.
So the question is, are they using that? Are they using that recycling center that's on the other tax map?
And. No one sits there and watches it, but I mean, you know, I'm, I'm telling you, if I, if you went up there and, and I've done this. Go up there and you follow people down, they stop on the way out, throw the trash in there, I mean, it. It was a good faith agreement between my mother and. The people at Forests, it was David Jaeger, it was, whoever was the property manager back then, they committed no problem. No more, yeah, Larson, yeah, they said no more. We won't put any more trash in here than the units that are here now, any new ones that we build, we will build separate areas for it, so it doesn't, it's not all coming down to one. And that, that's exactly what, and then it, nothing's ever happened, but the place has since expanded and built them.
So like, so like in the future. That'd be the first thing that you would make them build, like, you know, they're coming for.
Who, who was this, you talking about the pines?
Well, the, the previous, so I'm just trying to say, in the future, how is this, this work? We have them put in, like, the infrastructure and the transfer station.
I mean, I guess figure it out, just have to, you have to be done by, by the time so many units are completed.
Right, but I think you, you also got, again, thinking back to what you said earlier, that everything is. Specific to an application, so. The next application may not be, it may only be one. Development, it may not be gonna develop anymore. Or, you know, the, the subdivision. May, maybe smaller, larger, they, they may say, we're not gonna have any, we're gonna use a solid waste facility, but. It, it all depends on what kind of agreement is made at the time of application. You know?
Should we send them um, that letter that Paul has, that states that they would. Put in their own services and inquire?
I think there's two, there's two questions here, we do with current situation, what are we gonna do in the future?
Right.
Going back to who said about the future. I would say that we create it as a condition of approval that no dangerous permits will be issued. We won't issue until the roads are all built, right, we won't issue until the water is sewer everywhere, we won't finish it. Issue it until the stormwater systems are in. And you are able to recycle them or trash.
Or you tell us how you're gonna handle your trash.
Okay, well, they were telling us how they can handle the trash in the site family view.
Well, it's a different project.
Oh, but she's right, but they do have it, they did have until they build. Until they build, um, no, uh, fireside. They've got a, 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 a solid waste recycling place for South Peak now. Fireside goes, that's gonna lead, that's a.
Question for application, what are you gonna do with trash?
On the checklist, and there's something on.
I mean, certainly, we always ask where you know, trash. Where's asshole dumpster?
Well, you know, we should think about that for the South Peak, because they're gonna put that fireside and that's where their current solid waste places now. I know, but. We keep, we, we keep bringing that, I, I don't know if they're picking, people. That are there go to use that, and if it's not there, where are they gonna go? They're gonna be down here. They pay taxes. They gotta recycle on everything when they do that.
For, for the future, I'd make a condition of approval. That, that. To be cited under trash. Fail or do all, but now for this load situation. What if the first step is we just have a.
Wait a minute, it's all taken care of though. It's all taken care of, because Jaeger said, i- if you can show me. That it's, it's a requirement, I'll put it in, isn't that what he said? You would bet that meet, right? He did, David Jaeger said, because I brought it up and then I got pissed because I, I, I was talking, I said, look, it, it, in town records have been, been there. David Jaeger sat there, you look at the meeting, he said, if you can show me where it says that we were supposed to have that, I'll put it in.
And when was this sent today? Let's give him some time, you know?
Yeah, three o'clock.
No, I, I think it's been brought to our attention, but I think definitely, I mean, those are the right people to contact. Was it just Harry Stoffield and David Larson?
He, he made that, he, he made that comment, he said, Paul, if that's what they, they agreed to, I will do it. But I think what, what you're seeing is that, that they're building new buildings. So it's any building that's built after two thousand and eleven, it's the new buildings. It's not when they get approved. Uh, no, it says. You look at that, it says currently built, yeah. I, I can tell you, I was at the meeting, I was on a. It's, it says, the, the thing was, we're not gonna put any more in the buildings that are here today. And that was the whole thing, was the buildings that were there today, any, any new building going in was gonna go to a new place. Just, yeah, well, you know, things get written like that. That's why I got mad that night, you know, I just. Was, was trying to. Well, they take, they do, I mean, even though they got the. They've got the compactors, people don't close the doors, the bears climb in here and take all this shit out, or the recyclables in there, everywhere, you know? I just talked to David Jaeger, I think if you showed David Jaeger that, I think he will. Yeah, I, I, I think Dave will say, look, let's just build some.
Specifically, the, the notice decision, the pines for grid.
It does say that.
Says they needed. I don't see anything that Cal has sent about the, the um.
Well, what, right, it, it does say, it, it says buildings. Right, you see that? Where it says buildings or approved, right, but it, it, it was all. That, that, that or approved wasn't supposed to be there, I can tell you, if all the discussions that happened. Two thousand and eleven were supposed to be, they said. We will use that, the existing. What we're gonna, what we wanna build here, because they, they want to build that whole thing, and it, and, and they said, that, that's what it was said, and. And that's why it says units currently built, and even though it says or approved. It was units currently built is what he said, we won't put any more in there, a- and, and that's.
You know, but what, what, someone said years ago that you remember, and it was written on a piece of paper that says for approved.
But it says currently built too, so which one do you go by?
I was, no matter what side I was on, I was quite for what's written.
So it's written, it says currently built, but it also says or approved, so does that mean?
And both.
So it means both.
In order to be exempt, the unit has to be already built or approved. Unit on paper.
So does that mean that? All of Forest Ridge has been approved so far, that's all of.
No, no, no.
Is that a planned phase development? Yeah, it is, it's phase developed.
So.
We're still planning to go.
Well, I think anything probably would help the situation, so.
You know, this all started because they.
Yeah.
They, they have like, they have like a bunch of dumpsters all over the place, and they just consolidated into one.
I don't think they had dumpsters everywhere, the reason that they start, the reason that they came from that one big one down there was because they used to have a few just regular dumpsters. And the bears were just hauling the shit out all over the place.
Built that little.
So they said, okay, we wanna put a compactor in, so they put a compactor in. And then they wanna take the recyclables up, so they put a couple. Dumpsters there for recyclables, the bear started hauling those things out, and it was just, it was just a mess, so that, they said. That's what my mother said, look, you gotta do something about it, guys are hauling it over to my house.
Well, you can get bear cans for recyclable containers.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, you put little carabiners on the chains on the side of the door and you keep it.
It, it only works when people leave the.
Right, get in to lock the door.
Same thing as a dumpster, you know, those power, those compactors, you know? If you don't close the door, bear climbs in and pulls it out.
As they say, it's not a bear problem, it's a people problem.
Maybe shoot them.
One down the end of the street.
There was one up by a clubhouse, right? I think if you show it to David Jaeger and pointed out to him, I think if Carol says, just even sends him an email and says, did you see the information? I said, I think David Jaeger will say, yeah, I said I took, take care of it, now I will, that would be my.
Well, that's the first step.
Yeah.
But there was one. One of, one of our, one of our. Yeah, it was nineteen ninety four, nineteen.
So if you send that email to him, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
He should be settled. Um, well.
Okay, oh, that, that was it, okay.
In that planning, state planning, office planning, guys, planning, there's someone on the Saturday. I'm going to come in here and just. My brother was in one of the. It's totally online, so. Totally by Zoom. Um. So I, I said, I'm going to at least attend the whole morning session, then. Go back, we, we watch. Sessions, obviously you can't ask questions, participate.
Right.
But after the fact, um, we can go back and watch. Other sessions. You know, been. Up the time in the past and.
Things change.
One little.
Things change.
Change.
People ask.
Someone else's idea.
People ask questions, you know, so you're right, I, I just have time to go to it. Go.
Time to get, try to get out. But you kind of love to look.
And I think you have to sign up because you have the. Well, it's in your packet. It was in your packet last time, it's in my packet this time. The second, you know, it's like second document in. And I emailed it to Wilson.
Okay, Carol, when did you email that? I don't remember seeing it, I'm sorry. I don't remember seeing the link for that.
State list, I got it a few times.
I could probably find it.
You send it to everybody in the.
Yeah, I got it.
All right, does anyone have anything else?
Washington, John.
Sarah second, all in favor?
Hi.
Mike, can you go down and see the town clerk and get sworn in?
Thank you all, have a good night.
Night.